Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council meeting for September 26. I note there are not that many folks in attendance tonight. I think it's because the weather is so wonderful outside. But we do have a few folks here, and we want to hear from them. First up is our public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person who comes up has three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, your city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes and the end of your time. So I'm going to officially open that up, and we have four people signed up. The first is Kristen Taylor with TBG Architects and Planners. I introduced you, I guess.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor Kitty Piercey and city councilors. So in order to take full advantage of my three minutes, I'm going to read really fast. I am a Eugene resident in Ward Three, and as Mayor Kitty Piercey said, I work for TBG Architects and Planners, and I am here tonight both as a representative of Guard Publishing, the owner of 60 acres of campus industrial I-1 property along Chad Drive, and as a professional planner in support of the initiation of the Land Use Code Amendment to permit a clinic operated by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs within the I-1 zone. The Guard Publishing shares the common challenge with all I-1 property owners, the difficulty of developing I-1 property due to the exceedingly limited permitted uses and restrictive development standards, which reflect an outdated industrial market and development pattern. Guard Publishing has been trying to find tenants and/or buyers for their property along Chad Drive for decades with no success. With the hopes of developing their property, they have spent thousands of dollars on land use processes, including voluntarily going through the PUD process to take advantage of the opportunity it allows in proposing a more flexible design of the site and a mix of land uses, as well as implementation of development standards. Now, please keep in mind that the PUD process only allows for flexibility of implementation, so the permitted uses and development standards intent still must be complied with. Four years after the PUD approval, Guard Publishing continues to be unsuccessful in finding interested buyers and/or tenants that fit the Land Use Code limitations of the I-1 zone, even with the PUD approval. In my 11 years working for TBG, developing I-1 property has been a common challenge for all of my clients with I-1 property. In frustration, they often describe their property as condemned or undevelopable. The initiation of the Land Use Code Amendment to permit the VA clinic on I-1 zone properties is not only an excellent opportunity to open up viable sites for consideration by this potential valuable addition to our community, but also an excellent first step in addressing and updating the I-1 zone to reflect the current light industrial market and promote I-1 development in our city. In conclusion, without the Code Amendment, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to attract the VA clinic to Eugene due to their program parameters. Therefore, I encourage you to initiate the needed Code Amendment process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Joseph CDZ, followed by Cynthia Kokas.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilor, staff, audience. My name is Joseph Sheckel Zhenitsky. I reside at 1025 Taylor Street, Ward One. I'd like to speak up about something that is not really coming out with Envision Eugene, West Eugene MX, et cetera, et cetera. And that is, the whole process is of transportation corridors. Envision Eugene is concentrated on it, obviously MX is, but the bottom line that everyone fears a lot, and there isn't any public discussion about it, and there really needs to be one, is the public right-of-way. By creating transportation corridors where you want to redevelop and everything and put in multi-use stuff will require that you talk about the public right-of-way, because there is land being taken either through easements, where they can't build to the sidewalk anymore, or et cetera, et cetera. Many different ways, some of the property owners are losing nine feet with LTD. I think we need to speak up about the public right-of-way. Have a big discussion, a big forum, everybody gets to talk about it, and I even think everybody has to vote on this, because it needs to be discussed. You've got these grand plans without actually informing the people, "Hey, you're going to lose this," or "You might lose that." Why aren't we informing the people, the business owners? I'm not talking about the gigantic ones. I'm talking about every single business owner, resident, everybody on those streets. Let's get that discussion going. I don't hear it. Number two, freedom of speech. And I don't know if you were still there, Mayor, back in 1964, Free Speech Movement. I was a member of PL Progressive Labor, a Maoist organization, rested right alongside John Birchers, because we wanted to have tables representing our particular political views on campus to be legal. We all congregated together, we got 800 of us, got arrested together, but we did it all together, freedom of speech. I'm applying this to some of the no MX signs where we have problems. I'm applying it to a lot of things in this town, free speech. I know you remember, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cynthia Kokas is next, followed by Gary Jenkins.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Kokas. I live at 2465 Jefferson Street, and I'm speaking today on the issue of us being, Eugene being a green city. And for me, that means that I am free to walk and that I can take the bus. Tonight, I had to drive the car because my bus stops at 7:45, and I didn't think I could get myself over there, and that has proven a problem, because, as my husband said on her tombstone, it'll be she's at a meeting, and a lot of meetings are at night, and he doesn't like me to walk home. So sometimes it's hard to be green and ride the bus, and it's also hard to walk. I think that the press release about our crosswalks seem to be telling me how careful I ought to be, and I didn't seem to read anything in the Register Guard article about how careful drivers ought to be. I think that I'd like us to be a little bit more like Ashlands, and when I go down there to see theater, I see people approaching, drivers approaching crosswalks at a very slow pace, because they're looking to see if anyone even looks like they're going to cross. Here, on 22nd and Jefferson, we have a crosswalk but no signs, and children might be using that to go to Adam's School. I wouldn't advise my littlest grandchildren, when they get ready for school, to use that crosswalk, because there is no warning sign. You come up over a hill, and everyone on Jefferson, or almost everyone, is speeding. So there's your problem there. I think that cars have a priority in our city, and they run stop signs, they run yellow lights, they speed. I think it's kind of hazardous to be a walker, and the light settings are short. I'm not with a cane yet, but when I am, you would have, I would be in the middle of the crosswalks on Willamette with the light saying, "Stop, don't come," or whatever they say. I find crossing Willamette at 15th and 16th absolutely hazardous, and I'm very careful. I think that what we need to do is have some kind of a campaign to educate drivers. I think that we can't expect children to realize that nobody's paying any mind to that crosswalk. We have to have them aware of the law. They come right up around me, and they're obviously just hoping I'll hustle. They slow down. That's not the law about a crosswalk. I think that we need to make the drivers aware of the law regarding crosswalks, and we need to make them aware of the action that follows disobeying the law, and we need to cite them when they violate it. And I don't feel, as an elderly woman, that I'm seeing much of that. I'll be back in a month. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Last one up today is Gary Jenkins.
Mayor, council members, I believe there should be a policy change adopted by council that would establish polygraph tests for police officers in situations where there is any doubt or uncertainty of what might have happened in whatever situation in question. I think it would establish trustworthiness and confidence in the citizens of Eugene that are being falsely accused of crimes or wrongdoings, and maybe stop an officer from being untruthful or having alternative motives. If such a policy was in effect, my family would not be going through the nightmare that we are going through now. Police brutality and misconduct is a national epidemic, and we, the people, need to stop it before another man or woman's life is taken, like the homeless man in Fulton, California, that died at the hands of the people we pay to serve and protect us. If it wasn't for the way my wife was yelling the night of March 13, 2010, we would have been burying our son. Police Chief Kearns violated federal law, Chapter 18 of the USC Code, when he stated to the media and citizens of Eugene that his officers were just brutally attacked, when in actuality, it was my family that was brutally attacked. And I ask you again, city council members, does this look like a police officer that was just brutally attacked? Does this look like maybe a young man that was brutally attacked? Where does it stop? Does it stop when a young man or a young woman in Eugene is found dead because of the hands of the people we serve and protect us? Do people have to be afraid of the people we pay to serve and protect us? At one time in our lives, I always thought that if our children were in trouble, it was the parent's responsibility to let them know that if you're ever having a problem with the police, go to them, or if you're ever having a problem, go to the police. You know, if it was any of you council members that your family was in the situation that my family's in, you'd be here too, doing the same thing that I'm trying to do, trying to get some justice. Is it justice for all or justice for some? You know, Mr. Gistner, he still hasn't returned a phone call from me. You know, this man is questionable in a lot of different things that he has done. You know, did he whitewash my son's case? You know, when they did the investigation, none of these pictures were available to the Internal Affairs Unit. You know, so I ask you folks, what do we have to do to make police accountable for their actions? I would like to see that some type of adopted bill or some type of council bill where you guys pass some type of a thing to where police officers can be, polygraph tests. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask, given that there are any comments from any city councilors, Council Orteez is first, then Council Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming out this evening and sharing their thoughts with us. I just want to speak to Mr. Jenkins. Idea of requiring the police to have polygraph tests, that would be something that they would have to do within their union contract, and we do not get involved at that level of interaction with the staff. Our staff person is the city manager, and he's the one that we give direction to as far as giving direction to his subordinates, which would be Chief Kearns. And I believe there's justice for all. I also have children in this community, and I've also had interactions with the police department, and that's one of the reasons that I got involved in politics, was to be a part of the policymaking body that can kind of give direction to the city manager, to have transparency in all of the city services that we provide. So if I, you know, I don't know what your situation is, if you have time to volunteer, but there's different opportunities for you to engage in seeing how this is done. It's not an overnight deal, and I'm, once again, sorry for the trouble that your family has had.
Council Taylor.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the danger to pedestrians. I have brought this up numerous times. I think it isn't safe to walk across streets downtown and on Willamette, the streets that were mentioned, I've noticed it's not safe there either. And the lights do take a very, last a very short time, the walk lights. You're halfway across, and it starts saying, "Eight, seven, six, you better run." When there is a light, when there isn't a light, the cars do not stop, and I would like to see us have an effort to have the motorists obey the law rather than putting all the focus on the responsibility of the pedestrian. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much for coming, and we're going to move on our agenda right now. Next is a consent calendar, and I've been asked to pull Item B and Item C. Any other requests? Okay, so you'll be voting on A. All those, would you please vote? Yes, please make a vote. That's better.
I moved to approve Item A on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, please vote. Okay, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. So, Item B, Councilor Zelenka.
I wanted to pull this, not because I object to it, because I think it's a great idea, actually, and I wanted to have it be mentioned that what we're doing here is cashing in some of our old bonds at high interest rates to cash in on our historically low levels of interest rates, and with one of the series of bonds, we're able to save a total of $860,000 over the remaining life of the bond, which is no small amount. So I think this is great, and I just wanted to bring attention to and compliment our finance staffer being on the ball and saving the city substantial amounts of money.
City Attorney.
Mayor, because of the way the first motion was made, you will need to make motions for Items B and C.
Oh, because they said A. Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So would you make a motion for Item B, please?
Move to approve Item B on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. We're now at Item C. Council Orteez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I see staff is here, and I would like to pull this just to bring light to the work that our staff has done to initiate this Code Amendment in order to be more open for business in Eugene, basically. I just had a couple questions about I-1. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you gave us a map on Council Page 53 that shows four areas that are looking for the proposed zone changes. Is that correct?
Well, actually, these four areas are currently zoned I-1, which is our campus industrial zone, and if you are to initiate this Code Amendment and it is approved, then that particular Code Amendment would apply only to these properties.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on. I would hope that this is workable for the owners and that we do get some nibbles of businesses that would like to locate here from this. Thank you.
Okay, ready for make a motion?
Move to approve.
Oops, Council Polling's in the queue. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You stated that it only applies to these properties that you have highlighted on the map. Are these the only I-1 properties in the city? Is that it?
Correct.
Or are these the ones that meet the size criteria?
No, these are all of the I-1 zoned properties in the city, and the Code Amendment would apply across the board to any I-1 zoned property. That doesn't mean that they meet the VA's citing criteria.
Okay. So then, in the future, say, three, four years from now, somebody else wants to come in and build a similar-type facility, the property owners, if this were to pass, the property owners don't have to do anything other than put in the request for permits? Is that correct?
As long as it's the same use. Correct.
Right, okay. Well, I just want to point out that this is just initiating the process, and it doesn't mean that it's going to pass. It doesn't mean that we're in favor of it or opposed to it. It's just a simple initiation of the process.
Thank you for that clarification. Council Zelenka.
So, just to clarify that a little bit more, so this only applies to the provision of the I-1 zoning related to U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs clinics?
Correct. So government, just, clinics are not allowed outright in the I-1 zone. There is a provision.
Clinics or veteran affairs clinics?
Clinics, period, are not currently allowed in the I-1 zone. There is a category called government services, and I won't get into the specifics, but our hearings official found that the VA clinic didn't meet that definition of government services. So what we would propose to do is add them as a specific allowable use in this particular zone.
So this is a very, very narrow code change. It's related to VA hospitals only in these four areas around the city. The other is a comment. I asked about the VA hospital, assuming that they were a federal government, and that they would be tax exempt, and that they would own and build the VA clinic, own the land and build the VA clinic, and therefore all of that property and the development would be off the tax rolls. Turns out that within the RFP that they're asking for, they're asking to lease the property and lease the building, so all of that development actually gets onto the tax rolls for the city of Eugene, so that would be a big benefit to the city in terms of general fund and property tax revenues.
I just had one comment that I wanted to make. Given the testimony we had about this code, I think the testimony we had was applying to how difficult it was to build anything on this type of property designation, period, right? So this is much narrower than what I think I heard wanting to bring to our attention.
Correct. I mean, that particular person, there was support for this Code Amendment or initiating this Code Amendment, and she did bring up issues that we are experiencing with the I-1 zone, and that's something we actually have proposed as part of Envision Eugene, is to look at providing more flexibility in this particular zone, kind of making, maybe make it more of an employment zone, because we do here, and we actually do have quite a bit of vacant land that is zoned I-1.
So I recognize that we have a particular kind of facility. We're trying to see if there's, makes sense to be located, but I also want to be sure that we're not sort of passing up an opportunity to address the issues with that particular designation, period. So that's my only question about this, but I think I'm hearing from you that we're addressing this small part of it, but we'll continue to address the larger issue as we move forward.
Yes.
So this isn't going to take care of everything that you were interested in, but we are going to be looking at that. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
Okay, move to approve Item C.
Oh, sorry. George Polling again? Council Polling?
Thank you. I hope we don't get too lost in the politics of this Code Amendment. What the overall goal is for the city of Eugene is to land a facility in our city to help our veterans of past wars, as well as the ones that are just coming back. That is the main goal of what I see, is what we're trying to do, is we're trying to give the VA as many options as possible to find a parcel of land that they can fit the new clinic in, because this area needs a VA clinic very badly. I mean, we have folks going to Portland and going to Roseburg for no reason other than the fact that we don't have a VA clinic in our community. And we need to remember that, to work as hard as we can with whoever the property owner is, if and when the VA ever makes the selection, we need to work with that property owner to make sure that we do everything possible to speed the process along, because we're going to need that VA clinic in our community sooner than I think a lot of us realize.
Thank you for that. All right, let's do it.
Move to approve Item C on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you please vote? Eight in favor, none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to Action Item Three, Ordinance Concerning Fire and M's Response. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on this fire. Chief Groves is building the location. We've got one law for one of our, and we do choose here against the question.
All right, thank you very much. Want to put the motion on the table?
I move to adopt Council Bill Number 5054, Concerning Fire and M's Response Fees to Out-of-Area Users and Adding Section 2.610 to the Eugene Code, 1971.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I do not see any questions. Yes, you have one?
I was just going to say, if you could, that email that was sent out today that you read about the communities locally that already have this, or Springfield that's already.
Layman Ham's on it.
I think that would be very valuable, because the other thing that I wanted to point out is that when I learned that this provision, or this fee, actually gets paid for by your car auto insurance, and everybody theoretically is supposed to have insurance driving a car, and this is widely done in other communities, kind of turned about fair play for people in our community, that put me in favor of supporting this.
So in answer to your request, I asked this question of Chief Groves today. I'd like to hear of examples of communities that have such fees in our area and similar communities, and whether there have been any substantial pushback on such fees that have resulted in reducing or eliminating those fees. And the answer, a very thorough one that I received, is Goshen to our south, Lane County Fire District One to our west, the Oak Ridge Fire Department, the Springfield Fire and Life Safety Department have all adopted first-response fees. Springfield just passed the ordinance and is in the process of implementation. In addition, the Lane Rural Fire Rescue District is currently in the process of considering such a fee. Outside of our immediate area, I'm aware that the Ashland Fire Department and the Cascade Locks Fire Protection District have also implemented the first-response fees. Springfield Fire and Life Safety Department bills for Oak Ridge, Cascade Locks, and Ashland Fire Department without any apparent problems. In progressing the first-response fee concept, we did not form an exhaustive search for other Oregon fire service stations billing for these services. There very well may be other agencies within the state that have similar programs. As for the second part of your question, I'm not aware of any fire service agency that has implemented such a fee and then rescinded it. On a similar note, the State of Oregon bills for hazardous materials team responses on behalf of their 15 regional teams. That system has been in place for about 20 years, and Eugene receives revenue from our share of these billings since our fire department staff's one of the 15 regional teams. He attached an article. He said that they'd had some very vigorous discussions around this, because they are always concerned about not creating any barriers to people receiving service, but that if staff was moved past those concerns was the fact that the population would be comprised of system users who pay nothing to support the system and its infrastructure. In addition, our community members travel to and through communities that will charge them for the same service should it be needed in those locations. That's what I heard from the chief today that you asked about. All right, so I think we're ready to vote on this one. Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Thank you. The next item, Action Item Number Four, An Ordinance Concerning Multi-Unit Housing Property Tax. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just an item for the city's public hearing.
Has to do with Mupti in our, specifically in our downtown area, right? All right. Motion on the table?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5055, Adopting a New Sunset Date for the Multi-Unit Property Tax Exemption Program in the Downtown Plan Area.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Council Orteez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, hi, Nan. So I was just curious, within this ordinance, there's a lot of black lines through the description of where the current Mupti zone is, and I know we're just focusing on the downtown area right now, which is fine. So, and then it says something about the next chapter, that other areas are addressed in the next chapter of the Mupti, and when will you be seeing, of the Mupti program, when will you be seeing that?
We're looking for dates right now. We've identified a couple dates in the middle of October to bring back the larger discussion and to respond to the questions that you had when we met in July.
Okay. So if anybody were to be applying from here on out in any of the other areas, are those Mupti applications going to be put on hold, or the users of who would be using that been informed that this is going on?
I can answer part of it. I think that one applicant has been informed. I'm not aware of other applicants, and maybe the city attorney. I'm not aware of other applicants, and maybe the city attorney wants to speak more directly to that? Okay. John?
No.
Oh, okay.
So actually, there are two applications that I know of. One was approved and needs to be extended, but it's already been through the approval process. One has not been able to be considered, because now the time is too short to complete the project within that timeline, and that will be a decision. We'll need to highlight those issues in front of you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Move the motion on, yes, we did. So.
I'm asking to speak.
You are? All right. Go ahead.
I just want to say that I will vote for this only because it just applies to downtown.
Thank you. All right. Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you for that. The next item, item five, is a work session item on the Housing and Urban Development Sustainable Communities Grant, or as we know it, the livable cities grant, whatever it is, yes. Livability Consortium Grant. Yep.
We'll just call it HUD, Mayor.
All right.
Make it easy. Good afternoon. For the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the HUD grant, some recent events, and where we are today, or should I say, day after tomorrow, we'll know a little bit better about where we are. So as you know, in October of 2010, our region was awarded a HUD Sustainable Cities Grant for $1.4 million. There were over 1,000 applicants, and we were one of 45 that received this award. So quite an honor, actually. And then the work began by ElCog, who was the grant applicant and recipient on behalf of the consortium, which consisted of 11 parties, to start to put the consortium together, which included a work plan and a budget. Several months went by, and despite a lot of conversation and some presentations by ElCog, unfortunately, it kind of got off track, and in late June, the Springfield City Council took action not to continue as a consortium partner under the grant. We understood that shortly thereafter, the Board of Commissioners had also scheduled this as an agenda item, and we believed that they would also vote not to continue on as a partner in this grant. So I was asked to step in as interim project manager to regroup this because of the intergovernmental challenges that we faced in this. There were 11 partners, including a state agency, a transit district, two cities, a county, and the university among the big players. When I began looking at this in the very beginning, what I was looking at were, what were the major concerns? And I wanted to make sure we addressed those first. The two major concerns, the two sticking points that I saw were the management of the grant as a whole and the purpose of the grant. What was the work? What were the outcomes to be? What were the goals of the grant? And so we set up a new governance structure, and you have a copy of that. One of the things that became clear to me is that there was a lack of communication and a lack of control of the knowledge and the movement of the grant and the work under the grant. This new governance structure was set up to serve a couple of purposes, to make sure that those consortium members were actively involved in the progress of the grant, the work of the grant, how the budget was being spent. In the beginning, it was ElCog that was managing the grant. They were in control of how that work would progress, when communication would go out, who it would go out to. That didn't work, obviously. So the new governance structure is set up to make sure that the big players in the grant that are contributing to much of the activities, the City of Eugene, City of Springfield, the county, the university, and ODOT, would have more hands on in the work activities of the grant. There's also a leadership committee that was set up, consisting of Mayor Piercy, Mayor Lundberg, Commissioner Stewart, and a representative from the U of O, to make sure that policy decisions that need to be made throughout the progress of the grant were actually being communicated in a more timely manner, not in the 11th hour. And a new project manager, one that brought a different take to the grant process. Many names were vetted out, employee, current employees, former employees of the partners, consultants, and one name rose to the top and was recommended to the leadership committee, and that's our own Stephanie Jennings. Stephanie Jennings brings a different perspective to this grant process. She has a lot of knowledge and deep background with housing. In a former life before she came to the City of Eugene, she worked on the East Coast and actually worked as a project manager for the person who manages these HUD grants for all 45 recipients, and also worked with Shelley Poticha, the head of the HUD Sustainable Cities Office. And so she has agreed to step forward as the ongoing project manager of the grant. So with the new governance structure, we began to look at what were the gaps in the work plan, and how could we clarify that? One of the things that needed to be clarified in the very beginning is what this grant was and was what it wasn't. It is not a build a bridge, build a bike path grant. It's a planning grant. HUD and many other federal agencies are looking at better ways of spending their very limited funds, and they're looking at ways to get more bang for their buck, so to speak. And so HUD, in coordination with the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Environmental Protection Agency, got together and developed several programs to help local and regional governments and other partners find new ways to integrate their planning, planning for transportation, economic development, housing, affordable housing. How do we look at all of those planning efforts in a holistic way? And how do we help regional, local governments do that in a better way? Better, smarter planning? That's what this grant is about. It doesn't direct or mandate that we do anything. It doesn't, it doesn't have a specific outcome. It wasn't a bucket of money to say, you will build these things with this money. It's a way for us to look at our current and existing efforts and plans, figure out where the gaps are, how to integrate with our partners, like the university, and the county, and E-Web, and HACSA, and figure out a better way to plan for our region for the future. It also, although this is not said anywhere in the grant materials, it also sets us up to be competitive in the future for very limited state and federal and private funds. Already, HUD has issued a statement to prospective applicants for their competitive funds that they hope will become available in the future, that if you are one of these Sustainable Cities grant recipients, you get an, and you are being, and you are successful with it, you get an extra two points on your application for future competitive funds. That is huge, given the limited funds that will be available on the federal and state level. While I don't expect that to be as clear in other agency funding notifications, do expect an effort like this to give us an edge that other communities just won't have. And we can say we are planning a transportation project, and oh, by the way, although we want to build this road, or roundabout, or whatever, we've taken into consideration economic development and housing and social equity will make our application so much stronger. That's what this grant is about. And so we started to look at ways where we could take advantage of the grant funds, not only as an individual city, but as a region. And we wanted to look at those things that we were already contemplating doing, like Envision Eugene, those things that we were working on for a long time, like the Diversity and Equity Strategic Plan. And how could we use the grant funds to expand our capacity to do more and do the things that we want to do and we need to do? And so we worked on a work plan, and I've included that in your packet, that shows some of those efforts placed in the work plan, so that we can do some of the things that we want to do. And I have this really great handout here. Staff is prepared. Just as an example, that shows the relationship between the Envision Eugene planning and strategies and the HUD work plan tasks. It shows the different pillars of Envision Eugene and, that have been identified, and some of the things that we anticipate doing under the HUD grant that will help us implement, that are critical to the successful implementation of Envision Eugene. And you'll see other plans that we have, like the Fair Housing Plan, thing, work and data collection and analysis that we would like to do under some of these other strategies and plans, we can do under the HUD grant to help us be successful and fill in some of those gaps. And so where we are today, as you know, last Monday, we've been working on this really hard since the end of June, very challenging, but it's also one of the reasons why we were awarded this HUD grant, because we have a history of working together as a region. Last Monday night, the Springfield City Council took up the revised work plan and revised MOU and voted to support it. Tonight, we are asking for you to direct us to continue our partnership in the consortium. And tomorrow, the Board of Commissioners takes this up, and we are very hopeful that they will follow suit, at which point, we will get to work, because we are now many months behind and working very close with HUD to make this very successful effort.
Thank you. Not yet. Give me a minute. I just want to express my appreciation to Brenda, the other staff, people who work so hard on this. I want to express my appreciation to Mayor Lundberg and Commissioner Stewart for working hard with me to get to a place of agreement on this, and, or at least agreement that we thought we could bring back to our bodies. And I just want to reemphasize that it helps us do planning that needs to occur. It provides funding to move those things faster along than we would be, probably be able to do otherwise, and it gives us an edge for future things, which is something we're very interested in. Wednesday, I will be missing council meeting, because I'm on the Advisory Committee for the Regional Solutions, which has some similar things that they are working on from the state level and should intersect and work with what we're doing here. So be meeting with Governor Kitzopper on all the state agencies that are trying to work together, much in the same way that the federal agencies are, to make the best use of our funds, that limited funds that we have. So I think this is a very important thing for us to do, and I think, actually, it's a much, much better product than we had before. So that's good. Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. As your representative to the ElCog board, I wanted to reinforce or basically tell you that this particular project has had a profound impact on ElCog in terms of their approach to this kind of project, their approach to how they manage and organize things. And probably, that's a good thing. So I think, in the end, this will probably have created what I think is a much better perspective on the part of ElCog in terms of how they should approach their relationship with their government partners. I've talked extensively with the folks within ElCog about this. They're very aware of the fact that this frankly went wrong. It went sideways. They're very aware that this went sideways, and as Brenda says, they've worked very hard to try to not jeopardize what is a good grant through a flawed process. I think the fact that Springfield voted against it was, represented a variety of different things going on, some with regard to this project and some with regard to relationships as well. The fact that Springfield has come around and been able to support it demonstrates that progress has not only been made on this project, but that ElCog is also beginning to work on restoring its appropriate relationship with its partners. And that is, that's a process that's even going on today. So we're talking about this project, but I'm also saying that this project has been a bellwether for deeper conversation that's going on about ElCog's relationship with its government partners and how that should work. The management and governance structure for this, I think, is representative of what that new structure is and how it can, I think, be a lot more productive. It could be a model for future projects and how they could work. I would support this. I think the work that needs to be done is good work. I think we were in a bad place with regard to how that work could get done and how it would be managed, and I think we've managed to pull ourselves back very effectively through the greater involvement of the partners. And I not only want to thank Brenda, but I also want to thank the staffs at the major jurisdictions who were very, very closely involved in this. And to some degree, ElCog's willingness to go, yeah, we screwed up, we need to fix this, rather than trying to stonewall it, I think is also a credit to the fact that they are willing to recognize when they screwed up and that they need to change, and that's a good thing. So I support this. I think it's, I think it's gotten to a much better place, and I'm hopeful that the rest of the folks can see that.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I too wanted to thank Brenda and the mayor for the hard work on this. I think it is a better product as well. I think it's important to point out that it indeed is an honor. We were one of 45 out of 1,000 grants that were awarded. That's 5% of the people applied, got it, and we were one of them. I do like that this is not a single objective grant, but it's integrated on the front page of our AIS. It has the six principles where, which I think we all support, which is provide more transportation choices, promote equitable, affordable housing, enhance economic competitiveness, support existing communities, coordinate policies and leverage investments, and value communities and neighborhoods. Those are things that I've supported and I think all of us support, and this brings those together in this planning effort. I also like the, I like and agree with the governance structure. I think that works fine for me. I like that it addresses existing plans and integrates them into this process. I like that it adds economic development as one of the things that we'll be looking at. This is an economic development grant, but we're going to be looking at it, as we should. I like that it adds HUD STARS Program, which is the Sustainable Transportation Analysis and Rating System. It's an acronym. It's a new thing that HUD came up with that is a very good add to this, and I have confidence in Stephanie Jennings doing this. I think that's a very good choice. But I've been involved in the MPO Greenhouse Gas Scenario Planning and issue, and that's important work that the, it's in the MPO work plan, and it's also, we're required to do it under Senate Bill 2001 if we get the funding. This in part gets us that funding. So I want to be assured that the language changes that have been in here that changed the references to HB 2001 and Senate Bill 1059, and the language that said reductions in the transportation sector, those were changed to different kinds of language, but I think say the same thing, that the greenhouse gas scenario planning work that we were going to do isn't going to be affected by those language changes.
Mayor Piercy. Counselor Zelenka?
Let me see if I can summarize this very shortly. The funding under this particular grant does not meet the requirements under House Bill 2001. House Bill 2001, as you know, I was directed to have that amended, that we wouldn't have to do that work unless we received the funding. ODOT is contributing a large match to this particular grant effort. That match is not the required funding that triggers House Bill 2001. However, the scenario planning that will occur under this grant is part of setting up our region to do whatever required requirement under either House Bill 2001 or Senate Bill 1059 that may come about in the future. ODOT has assured us that that funding is available, and they are willing to provide that funding for us to meet the requirements of House Bill 2001, but this is not that funding. And so I just wanted to make that clear. They have made that clear in a letter that they have provided.
Right. But it does create some of the building blocks that we'll be using in that analysis in the future, and so this helps us get further along in that regard.
Mayor Piercy. Counselor Zelenka?
Exactly. These are the building blocks that will set us up for meeting any requirement that we may have to meet in the future.
In my mind, the scenario planning that we're going to be doing because of those bills is very much related to this. They're not the same thing, and there'll be different pools of money to do different exact products that we need, but they're very much related, so that they overlap quite a bit. And I think that's, is that a big part of ODOT's interest in helping fund this, is to move people towards that kind of?
Mayor Piercy. Counselor Zelenka, that's exactly their interest in providing such a large match disproportionate to their leveraged funds, is to get us prepared for any type of future scenario planning that we may be required to do.
How much is the ODOT?
It's, well, I.
Match.
Mayor Piercy. Counselor Zelenka, I'll say it's, I think it's $432,000 in cash.
I'll say it's, I think it's $432,000 in cash and leveraged funds. There is a question because much of the numbers don't add up, but that's the number that I'll go with today, $432,000.
On top of the $1.5 million grant?
Exactly.
So, it's like $2 million. Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Ortiz.
I just would like to add my voice and a thanks to the work that was done. I think I'm glad to hear Counselor Pryor comment about ElCogh's working processes that they have, and that this has caused them to take a second look at how they do things. Good things can come out of bad scenarios, and here's a good example of it. And I would just kind of have a question about Stephanie Jennings. Is she going to leave her job then here at the city and work? Or is this going to be kind of a, you know, John, you've got to quit giving these people two job titles?
Here comes one with two.
I know you have very talented staff, and I'm sure she's up to the rises to the occasion, but...
Right. We're working through those issues right now about how many hours it will exactly take her to manage this grant. We're anticipating that the first six months will probably be an almost full-time job, and then it should wean off for a period of time, and then, again, kind of launch into full-time. So, right now, what we're talking about is that she'll be contracting with the region. So, she will still be a city of Eugene employee. She's going to report to me, and we're working through some of her job duties, which part she will keep, which part she won't keep. But she will be reporting to the project management team, which is made up of consortium members.
Well, I...
Just to add, if one, if you know she's a career employee, absolutely great opportunity for her to do her professional development, her days of career. So, it really does apply to a great opportunity.
All right. And we're not going to ask her to cover both, so...
I'm sure it does. I'm just, you know, I just, it is a great opportunity for her, and she's definitely an up-and-coming young person and deserves to have those opportunities. I just want to end by thanking Brenda for your leadership with this, because I don't know that you were the leader, but you're definitely the right person to work with situations that we expect a good outcome from, and I appreciate the time that you put in. And John, thanks for, and the mayor also, and I want to thank Mayor Lundberg also, and Commissioner Stewart for participating. I think I really have hopes for this grant. It just seems like it's, it makes sense to me. We don't have time to look at those things regionally. That's not what we do as a city, and I think that it is a responsibility of the whole community, and that's really what this is about. When we talk about, you know, economic development, transportation, you know, we all do our part, but this seems to me, anyway, to give the community an opportunity to look at it kind of globally, as opposed to when we're not necessarily at odds, but definitely vying for the same buckets of money. It seems to me like we need to work more cohesively together, you know, across the community if we're going to really move this agenda along. Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that one of the good things that happened is that everybody, Mayor Lundberg and Commissioner Stewart, I mean, everybody's kept working at it until we got to the place that everybody could say this works for us, and nobody left the table and nobody worked against it. Everybody was trying to get to the place where we thought we had the best product for all of us. So, kudos are deserved by everybody. Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Pryor, I was certainly glad to hear your commentary on this, that we did learn lessons from it, and that, because to me, the whole thing seems pretty frustrating that we're spending a great deal of staff time and a great deal of energy building plans and rebuilding plans and reworking plans and reassigning personnel for a $1.4 million grant, which isn't chump change by any means, but a lot of time's been spent on it. And I'm glad to hear that we're getting something beyond the non-bricks-and-mortar that you're describing, that something that maybe we can take into the future. So, I'm still frustrated because this has taken a long time, and for us to have to go through several iterations of it before we can get anything agreeable to all parties is pretty frustrating. And it's not a great deal of return in terms of money, and there is a lot of staff time being spent on it. I won't ask at this point in time who's paying for the staff, who's paying for Ms. Wilson's time, for instance, prior to getting the grant or prior to actually receiving the grant. But, you know, grants aren't free, and performing to the measures written out in grants is not something that comes often within the scope of the grant itself. So, like I said, the grants aren't free, and I'm glad we're getting a lot more out of it than what we see at face value on the paper that we're looking at this evening. Thank you.
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Farr, do have a very brief response. For the work activities that will occur under the grant, aside from Stephanie Jennings' work, those grant funds are available to the partners, including us, to expand our capacity to actually do some of the work. So, the HUD STARS project that Counselor Zelenka referred to, we can use the grant funds for that. We will leverage some funds in kind match, mostly for work that we had already planned on doing, that we can contribute towards the grant. And so, this grant does, it's not a lot of money, but $1.4 million is enough, considering only 45 cities received it. But we do get to expand some capacity in some areas to get work done, as the mayor said earlier, faster than we would have without the grant. As far as my time, this was an intergovernmental challenge that needed to be fixed, and it needed to be fixed quick, and I didn't view my work as grant work. I viewed it as intergovernmental relations that will pay us back far into the future.
Thank you for that clarification. We had a good person on the job, no question about that. And I'm certainly not questioning staff's time. I know that the manager is very judicious as far as how he assigns staff. But we have to understand that a lot of the cost of applying for this grant, receiving this grant, and ultimately using the grant does not fall within the $1.4 million that we receive from the grant.
You know, I was just remembering, I think it was a budget session before last year, when one of our major goals was to land more grants to help us get things done. That was a council goal and direction, so this is right in line with what we asked our folks to do. You want to put them on the table?
Yes. Thank you.
I move to direct the city manager to have the city continue as a partner of the Lane Livability Consortium.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. I think we're ready to vote. Please vote. Seven in favor and one in opposition. It passes, and with that, we are finished with the business of the evening. Thank you all very much.